Doing Facebook Live and it is being recorded. And it just came across Facebook Saturday's Live. Being a first to order of business, it's a pleasure to be here Mr. Fly.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in the best of the good and justice for all.
The next item of business is the approval of the minutes. There are some corrections on here. John, do you want to go over the next first please? Your correction, your corrections?
Sure, mine's with the liquidity airworks. I don't know where part of the sentence is.
Let's get there, it's on the second page.
It is on the second page. It's going to be under new business number six, under liquidity airworks. It's the third sentence. Grand received, read, John reading your plan inserting, strike has, we decide, decided that a full site development plan is not required, striking only building permit and inserting only a site improvement plan and a building permit process is required. And you've already approved that concept plan that was presented to you.
Okay, anything else?
That's it for me.
Under neighborhood professional. You have here that all were in favor, none opposed. Martina did not vote on that. She was out of the room.
And I'm opposed.
Yeah.
Which group?
Changes to the NP Professional District.
Oh, I was opposed, never mind. I was opposed to the change.
Make sure you put your microphones on when you're talking into the microphone.
Where are you guys at?
It's on the second.
I'm on the second page where it says, propose changes to the NP Neighborhood Professional District.
Seven, third on the mail.
Ordinance 2022-5.
Oh, no, no. Martina did not. Sorry.
No worries. Any other additions or corrections? Seeing none, is there a motion to accept as amended and corrected?
Absolutely.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve the minutes as amended. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Those opposed? Motion carries. I apologize, I forgot to introduce our two newest members of the planning commission. We have Ryan Peta to my right, who is a sitting member, is a voting member. And to my left is Steve O'Malley, he is our alternate. The alternate would vote if we did not have one of us were not here, the alternate could then vote. The alternate is always welcome to give comments on anything that we're talking about. Our next item of business is citizen comments. And I'm going to ask the mayor to come forward first. If there's anyone else that wants to comment, please.
You can sit at the table or you can sit. Just test. Fair store. Good evening and thanks for this chance to speak to you. Mixed use zoning is a new feature that frankly, we have little in-town practical experience beyond site visits to other communities. The concept of mixed use has a special exception in what is written on paper. Obviously, as we discuss the back property in future workshops, public hearings and other regular meetings, it becomes crucial that the planning commission and the town council makes their decisions on the most sound basis available. We must indeed get this right for Mount Airy, which is unique in its existing architecture, along Main Street, our existing facilities, our challenges and our inherent assets. Last week, a council member reminded me of an item inserted within the code under mixed use zoning that could be used as a tool by the planning commission throughout the approval process from the pre-concept sketch layout plan to the final concept plan and the pattern book. That reference reads as follows. Throughout the development review process, should the planning commission determine that additional assistance to review and application is required, the town may hire licensed professionals such as a landscape architect, architect and/or engineer to assist the review of the application. The cost of any outside professional shall be paid by the applicant. The town shall make every effort to minimize the cost associated with any outside professional assistance. That's the reference. So what I am asking of you this evening is to place the concept of seeking an architectural or engineering consultant at the applicant's expense to your May 23 agenda to be considered as a tool for the planning commission to review the developer's plans to ensure the town is getting the best product available, appropriately proportioned and well thought out with the least likely likelihood of adverse impacts and in fact, a development that complements our existing town. Logistically, I believe the council member plans to request some money be added to our town's budget to pay for the consultant upfront. And I myself, along with the town staff, will work out with the developer to figure out an eventual reimbursement in a fair arrangement with the developer. So again, what I ask of you this evening is to place on the May 23 agenda, a consultant and we can work out the details if indeed, and the planning commission would have this tool to use as the different plans come forward throughout the next several months. Thank you for your time and if you could please add that to the agenda, I would appreciate it.
Thank you. I think it's a great idea, so make sure you put it on there. Are there any other citizens' comments, user comments about items that are not on the agenda for this evening? Say your name and.
Angie Winter, 2009 Fort Hines Court, Karen Mander. I feel like I'm a broken record when I speak to the planning commission. Everything that seems to be coming up as of late, develop, 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 develop. And I understand that growth is imperative and smart growth has to take center stage, it has to come first. You have neighbors who are consistently saying they don't want high density, they don't want tons of commercial, they don't want another gas station, another drive-through, they don't want another commercial property that's going to sit half full. But lo and behold, north, south, east and west in this town, that is what is being approved by the town council, but I know it begins here with favorable recommendations. At what point do we get an unfavorable recommendation to changing the landscape of this town? Please listen to the neighbors, please listen to our concerns. We took the survey, we articulated what we want, but it just doesn't seem to be happening, seems to be falling on deaf ears. So if there's anything that you can do to help maintain our small town quality of life, to balance that with responsible growth, please consider. That's all we're asking. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Candy Washabug, 602 Deer Hollow Drive. I really wasn't going to speak tonight, but after Amy got up here and spoke, I decided I have some serious concerns. I was a member of the planning commission for six years and then as you know, I was a member of the council for a little less than three years. Everything that you're reviewing right now, I lived, eaten, slept for many, many years. I listened to many people, what they wanted, what they didn't want. And I am so disappointed that some of the recent decisions of the back property, such as the two ordinances that were passed right after I was off the council, were something that wasn't really envisioned when I was on the planning commission. We discussed the mixed zoning for years, we never, and we did discuss that maybe that would be a good zone for the back property. It was written in the master plan that that may be a good choice for the back property, but it didn't say what year that would happen. It just said that it may be a good potential zone. We worked on that zone, we worked at it here and then we worked at it when I was on the council. I only approved it because now our mayor put a safeguard in place so that we would be able to look at the concept plan before we agreed to, if that property became mixed zone, we would be able to look at the concept plan first. Instead, we put the cart before the horse and we waived open space and we made that sort of part of the downtown zone so that it could get this special waiver. And we brought it in before the 2023 master plan, which is going to be next year. I just, I just can't believe we did that. But with that said, I keep hearing that the reason why this was such a good idea is because of the downtown vision plan and because, you know, in the survey, people said they weren't at Center Street. But I seriously doubt if people knew that the Center Street, if we put it through, was going to be with high density units. So the other thing is, I highly recommend that the executive summary, maybe you look at that again for the recent survey. And the number one thing that people liked about Mount Airy was a small town charm, a small town environment, as they called it. So with that said, I just would love to see, as we look now at this concept that will be coming forward, that this is the most important piece of property that our town has the opportunity to develop. And as I said, the cart was put in front of the horse, but I think hopefully, we can write that a little bit with really good decisions on what the people of this town really want for that property. It's got to be a blend between the two. You know, the one thing that's disappointing is, I feel like this decision was rushed because of Center Street. I keep hearing, well, everybody wants Center Street to go through. But I looked at the meeting of the minutes that took place between two council people and the previous mayor, and in there, the developer backs off putting through that Center Street immediately. And basically saying, well, I have to be able to get, you know, my money's worth out of this first before I agree to put Center Street through. So please don't make any decisions where it's to the detriment of this town. Please make decisions that are well thought out and that really have the citizens' voice first and not the developer. Thank you.
Is there anyone else for public comment?
Mark Richards, 1002 North Main Street. To be honest, after the combined work session, I saw a glimmer of hope. I hope that we can build on that glimmer. I was very impressed by, and Councilman Devoto is here, he's the one that said it, I'm just paraphrasing you, sir. He envisions a model by which Mount Airy plans a development where other jurisdictions would come visit and copy that model. I personally don't expect to see everything that I want. I think it's going to be a give and take process. However, it should never look like this. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mark. Okay. Anyone else?
Those are tough to follow up on. My name's Nicole Mann, I live at 405 Winkle Drive. Sorry. And I'm not going to get into, basically what everyone said is what I would like to say to begin with, but I'm going to get a little more specific since I live right next to Back Drive. And I'm in particular concerned with the back property. Park Avenue traffic, especially at the light, is very difficult. We, I've had to call in town police multiple times for people running the bus stop light there because they're trying to beat the light to get to 27. The Park Avenue light is already a mess, especially when it's pool season, especially during rush hour and Christmas time because the post office is right there. If I leave my house at certain times of the year, certain times of the day, I have to turn right and go all the way through town just to get to 27 because I can't get out. And I live right there in the town, I'm right behind the post office. So if Back Drive becomes this entryway to a massive development and to Center Street, people are going to start taking that way and it's just going to be, it already backs up because of the stop signs. And so that's my one concern, just as being a local resident right there. I also attend the church across the street and I know that there's talk of finishing Century Drive all the way through around the church property. And Mr. Nell doesn't want to give up his, part of his land for it, but eventually it will end up exiting right there and they don't have Center Street on the other side of 27. I don't see that working without a light. Because on Sunday, when I get out of church, again, sometimes I have to turn right unless I floor it and try to get out of there because of the traffic coming out of Watkins, especially in the summer. So those are my two big concerns with having those two intersections meeting like that. I understand the master plan has been in works for 20-plus years, probably goes even further than that, with finishing Center Street. And I've made a point to talk to a couple of businesses off Main Street and off of Center Street and just wanted their opinion on, do you still want this finished? And part of it was, well, we do, but we're concerned with this plan that those businesses that are going to go in at the edge of Center isn't going to actually bring people downtown. That downtown will become such a mess, nobody's going to want to go down there anymore. You already have trouble parking, which I don't mind, I go to downtown all the time. Right now, it's doable. There is, you can park, you can walk, it's manageable. But if you finish Center Street with this, at what cost is it going to end up actually costing businesses downtown? Because personally, I probably won't drive down there anymore because it's going to be so many cars, so many people because of the new developments. That's really, besides everything else that was brought up today, I think where I agree with what the mayor said, that we should really have someone from the outside looking in to make sure that this is all being done properly and is well thought out. I feel like the vote is being a little rushed, waiving the open space. I tried to go to Watkins Park on Saturday, it was packed to the point where kids can't really have a good time because it's so packed. We need more open space, we really do. And Watkins Park is just not enough. So waiving the open space to me was like, what? What we need is more playgrounds, what we need is more places for kids to play while their older siblings are playing soccer and baseball. And so that among the mixed zone use, I understand that that is the best way to get the property developed, but this plan is not going to work for our town. And that's all I prepared for tonight. I'll have more to say at the next meeting, but thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else before you move on? Okay. We'll hear now from our Frederick, our Carroll and Frederick County Planners.
Good evening, everybody. Hi Hannah. Hope everybody enjoyed the nice weather this weekend, it's nice. Just two updates, we have officially started discussing the Ag and Conservation Zoning Text Amendment with the county planning commission. That was introduced, I believe, in March and we are hoping to give that to the county commissioners with enough time before their terms end in November. And then one other thing is the annual report with the county. We have all of the town's information and we're going to be consolidating the county's information with all the other municipalities and to the annual report for the state. And that will be presented to the county planning commission in June, I believe. So if you guys want to copy that before we send it to the state, I'm happy to.
That'd be nice, provide that John's meeting.
Yep.
Send it to us, that'd be great, thank you.
Absolutely. That's it for me, if there's any questions.
Thank you.
Have a good meeting.
Okay. And Tim from Frederick County?
Good evening, planning commission members. We took a good fellow from Frederick County. I do have a PowerPoint presentation to share this evening. John's going to be my independent assistant. Okay, so just an update, one update on development issues in the eastern part of the county. And then I'll talk about the, just a brief update on the Sugarloaf Treasured Landscape Management Plan that we're working on next slide. So you've seen this slide before, this is the Linganor area. The only recent update here, the far left portion of the screen is the water property, eight employment lots have recently been approved by the planning commission. One site plan has been approved, or excuse me, one site plan has been submitted for development of a medical office building there. Okay, next slide. This is the area in the Lake Linganor PUD called West Ridge. This is the second to last larger kind of development pod that is undergoing review. There are some other little sections of Lake Linganor that remain undeveloped, but this is the second to last larger area to be developed. You see the north, at the top there is Gas House Pike and the green line is the fairly recent annexation by the city of Frederick. So the city limits of Frederick do butt up against the Lake Linganor PUD. And the areas outlined, indicated there by the red dot, and that's Linganor Road. And then on the far right-hand portion of the screen is the Woodridge Community, if you're familiar with that portion of Lake Linganor. Okay, the next slide? And this is just the schematic they've submitted, but it's still under review, has not been scheduled yet for our planning commission. They're proposing 295 single-family lots and 105 townhome lots. So that's that. Okay, next slide? So just a quick update on the Sugarloaf Treasure Landscape Management Plan. Okay, next slide? So as everyone knows, I think Sugarloaf is a very scenic, beautiful area. It's a very scenic rural landscape and the area that contains the only mountain in the Maryland Piedmont, Sugarloaf Mountain. And the plan we're writing is a conservation and a protection plan for this area that has significant environmental resources and very sensitive environmental elements. Okay, next? And some more roadway network is the one on the left there, I believe that's Dixon Road. It's a gravel road, very narrow. And the one on the right is Slate Quarry Road, the far southern portion of the county. Okay, next slide? So the livable Frederick Master Plan, that was our county policy document approved in 2019. That calls for a plan, so this is the schematic plan from the livable Frederick Master Plan. Click it again, John. It's, Sugarloaf is identified as part of our green infrastructure network, there's an agricultural network, sector, and then Sugarloaf also is identified as a treasured land, excuse me, a rural heritage landscape. There are a few other areas in the county that have that notation as well. Okay, excellent. Can I repeat again, please? So again, just further description in the livable Frederick Master Plan about this significant area that we'll be planning for, we are planning for. Okay, next one? And then the implementation program for the LFMP, that's the shorthand version, again, calls for the Sugarloaf Mountain Plan, Sugarloaf Area Plan to be pursued. Okay, so this is just kind of a timeline, as you very well know, there's lots of processes and steps involved with any kind of master plan. And I'll run through these bullet, several bullet items. We did release the draft plan last summer in 2021. We had a community open house, all virtual, you know, last August. Our planning commission just finished nine workshops on the draft plan. That's a little dizzy here. So they released their, their draft plan just last month and their public hearing is next month. And they'll hold a few other workshops to finalize and formulate their recommended plan that they'll convey to and release and transmit to the county council, who will begin a whole other series of reviews, public deliberation, public hearings before they adopt a Sugarloaf Plan. Okay, just some quick facts about the area. It's 19,000 acres. You see it's outlined there in the white. The eastern boundary is Interstate 270, extends north all the way to the Monopussy River. And the Monopussy River is generally the western border of this planning area. Then of course, the Montgomery County line. It's kind of sparsely populated, 2,399 people live in this area. Okay, next one? And 879 dwellings, so it's very, you know, low density, it's resource-rich, let me keep going, John. Significant environments and habitats, unique history. One of the interesting historical elements is the purchase of Sugarloaf Mountain by Gordon Strong over a period of 50 years. It's all privately owned, the mountain there, but they open it up for public people to go hiking and bird watching and just, you know, commuting and enjoying nature. The next one? So it's 3,183 acres. And part of the, this is, this planning area also includes some of the Monopussy Battlefield. And I'll show some other slides of that. And then there are some DNR holdings in the area. Okay, next one? So this, these are just the portions of the Monopussy National Battlefield that are on the west side of 270 that are in the Sugarloaf Planning Area. That Worthington Farm, that's, it's not a back town. The Worthington Farm, it's, you can hike down to the river and up, that's called Brooks Hill, a very interesting hike where that forested bridge is there with the stream system. Okay, next one? Okay, I have some arrows on for the two, John. So the yellow areas are the Monopussy National Resource Management Area, it's about 1,800 acres they own down there around the river. And Orbanon Lake is there by 270, interesting old pond with a grove of white pines. And then the Sugarloaf lands are shown there, the 3,183 acres, I think it is. So that's a nice view of the mountain from Comas Road entering from Montgomery County. And that road on the bottom is Peters Road, it parallels to the Bennett Creek, it's in the floodplain, very narrow gravel road. And these are, this is just one of the elements that, that are all throughout the planning area where, you know, the county doesn't think, you know, the position is that it's to not overwhelm those, those road networks like that, that are very narrow, windy, have bad horizontal and vertical alignments. So that's just the chapters within the plan. There are lots of subsections within each one of those chapters. Okay, going, John? Like every plan, there's a vision statement and goals, which I'll show quickly. Policies and initiatives are embedded within the different sections of each chapter. We are proposing a comprehensive rezoning for this plan as well We are proposing a comprehensive rezoning for this plan as well as comprehensive plan changes, land use plan changes. I have an example of that. And then another key implementing element of this plan is an overlay that we're proposing. It's an overlay zone, and we do have the, push that again, John, a purpose and intent statement and goals and the content of the plan, I'll have a summary of that. So these, and I'll just put these up here for a second. These are the overall plan goals to guide everything that's, that you'll be reading in the plan or hopefully will be in the plan. There's a vision statement. Quite long. We worked with an advisory group also during the development of the plan. So this is just an example, it's a bit hard to read, but the areas that were, the primary areas that we're planning for rezoning or recommending for rezoning are shown in, outlined in pink. So the area, the large area in green there, that's our existing resource conservation zoning along the mountain and other large forested areas. But when we did in-depth an examination of the resources that were present in there, there were many steeply sloped forested stream valleys that did not have the resource conservation zoning, the appropriate zoning category for those sensitive landscape elements. So these are just a few depictions of the areas that we are proposing rezoning, this is just one small area in the area, in the region. Okay, yeah, this is a couple more clicks, John. So again, the overlay, that's a big, as I mentioned, a big implementing element for the plan. And this was also called out for in the livable Frederick Master Plan, so you know, this is nothing new, it's been out there for years now. And so now we're just moving to the next stage, we've, the next slide, please. Okay, a couple more, just another, the next one. So we work, you know, with the planning commission, the date there, February is their last date when they made some modifications to the proposed ordinance language. So we are proposing brand-new language, code language for this overlay zone. And the objectives and goals, you know, what it aims to do, I'll leave it up there for a moment. You know, because it's such a sensitive area with significant resources, you know, constrained road network, the county, the county's policies from livable Frederick say that these are worthy of protection, not to overwhelm this landscape, the road network, the neighborhood, the stream systems with, with development. Next one, the purpose and intent, what the overlay will, will do. And then just a, just a summary, this is the last slide. So it's designed to address incompatible land uses that the county sees that could potentially be established there. Most of the area is zone, resource conservation and agricultural. So we're looking at, you know, addressing the scale, intensity, massing of new buildings and new uses down there. There are a list of prohibited uses that we're recommending. We have additional requirements for applications for timber harvesting. Timber harvests allowed in any zoning district in the county. We're just kind of strengthening some of the requirements when people seek permits to do that. And so the last one is the, we are recommending a cap or a limit on new non-residential, non-agricultural buildings. Again, to address the scale of intensity of new uses that could come into the area. In that last box on the right, we did an analysis of all the buildings in the Sugarloaf Planning Area, and that's the size breakdown. So, you know, there are not a lot of large buildings there, there are some large barns, but, so a lot went into the development of this ordinance. And we crafted the ordinance language, so the intention is to, is for the council to adopt that once, in conjunction, in tandem with the plan document, the comprehensive plan map, the zoning map, so they'll, we're recommending that they apply this, adopt this as well as part of the whole package. So that's a quick, very quick run-through. I didn't answer any questions that you may have.
Well, Tim, thank you for the presentation. I was gonna say, if it was online, but it looks like you covered that up there. But second question's not related to anything that you presented today, but do you have an update on, wasn't Frederick County trying to implement, I want to say, a historical preservation area between Linganor or Newmarket and Mount, Mount Airy? I'm just wondering what the status of that is.
Yeah, that was a rural historic district.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's still underway, that's taken a lot of time and effort among staff to do that. If you'd like a deeper dive into that, I'd be glad to bring our historic preservation planner to you to talk in more detail and depth about that process, if you'd like.
Yeah, that would be great.
Thank you. It's quite interesting, it's, she was telling me that it's really the only one in the state so far. And we all think of, you know, historic districts in an urban area, like Mount Airy and Frederick, but this is a rural historic district. So it's, it's very unique, so, and it comes with a lot of challenges too, to establish something like that.
Are citizens allowed to ask your question?
Yeah. Yes.
Quick question, sorry.
That's okay.
Um, Amy, one or two thousand and four, I'm sorry. Um, the question relates to the western side, excuse me, eastern side of Frederick County. Where the Black's Mountain Area, 18 months ago, two years ago, there was talk about maybe two to four thousand houses being built along that line. Is there any update on that?
Well, the eastern portion of Frederick County, near Mount Airy, it's not an area designated for growth. It's mainly, you know, existing well and septic development, but there's no additional growth areas on our master plans for this area.
So Frederick County, even where the Black's Buffalo Road, where those farms are.
Yeah, it's all agriculturally zoned, ag rural and our long-range planning.
Okay, thank you. Thanks, Senator.
Thank you.
Very welcome.
Thank you, that was nice, thank you. We're moving on to our new business. The first item is the 2023 Master Plan Rezoning Request. The first request we had is 1801 South Main Street, a request to go from RE, which is residential existing, to CC, community commercial. John, do you want to go over the report?
Sure. Again, this was, this was presented last month at the planning commission meeting. And due to time restraints, we were unable to, to finish these four properties. Again, 1801 South Main Street is the large parcel that's up on the projector currently. This parcel is 3.67 acres. The applicant is requesting to be changed to, from the current zoning of RE, which is residential existing, to community commercial. Currently, this property and the recognition on granting or proposing is that, that we do rezonate this to community commercial. I think, you know, this section of town seems to support a commercial element. My one big item would be to possibly make sure they're rezoning when we go through the master plan. Is the reason in this parcel here, which was a parcel for the CSX tunnel that's beneath it, to NP to create a buffer between whatever we do on this part of South Main. Whatever we do, we change it all to CC, or some to LC, or some to CC, or some to NP. But currently, the applicant is asking for the CC classification for this parcel. And that's it.
Okay. Is he ever here?
Yes.
Do you want, do you have any more to say than what you said in the last meeting?
Please come up to the center table here and introduce yourself.
Evening, Edman Kuehlmann.
I'm sorry.
Edman Kuehlmann.
Okay.
I'm here for Mr. Boswell.
Okay.
First, I want to just say you wholeheartedly support the recommendation of the staff that you have. And one minor correction. It's not 3.67 acres, it's 5.5, I believe, 5.2, 5.5. And you have a plat, a recent survey, which will show you the exact, how many points to the rate of the decimal. And we now have a map that accurately reflects this area. And we call all the problems with the state highway, which, when we recited the history, the Boswell family got here in the 60s, in 1965. And I'm thinking of former planning commission members and families in that area that have been here for years, like the Boswells. And at one day, the state of Maryland comes along and they figured out that they're gonna build an interchange for I-70 and connect Route 27. If you owned the Boswell property at the time, you would see how that almost got obliterated because of the interchange that we've all been using for years is sitting there. So anyway, the map has been corrected, but Mr. Boswell is still working on getting the Department of Assessment and Taxation to make the number five point whatever based on the survey, because they need, they can't just fill, even if there is an error with the reported acreage, they can't just change it. So there will be probably a confirmatory deed prepared, so we will get that finally ironed out. There won't be any discrepancy, but there's a difference between 5.5 acres and 3.67. All I'll say is that I think this request is appropriate, especially since we're now dealing with the master plan update. And I know the commission and the mayor and council are reluctant to deal with this as an individual petition because of an error which was, which was alleged. And so time has gone by and the Boswell family is still here, and we're getting certain things corrected there. And the other thing I would say, having spent most of my life in planning, that I think that the town is well armed already with what you have in your ordinance. So let's just make believe this property is own business, and maybe some others up there are too. When it gets down to somebody who wants to do something of a business nature, in whatever he makes business, you have the reformer to have a site plan. So we're getting down into details, what's the use, what's the effect this use might have on the adjoining property or properties across the street. So this commission and the town have, have tools to deal with those things. And it's the very thing you were talking about. And this item that just came before on your agenda of having a professional person take a look at this from the town standpoint. What do they propose, if they're gonna do it in an, in an existing home? Or this is a piece of raw land and we're starting from scratch? It would be a good thing to have a professional give you suggestions, which I'm assuming, in the end, you would make the final decision on that because the planning commission approved site plans. And so I'm just saying, that's a great tool, I think you'll be covered. You don't have to lay a rake at night and wonder what's gonna happen. You get the plan right and get the zoning right, then let them come forward with whatever they got and you take it from there. So that's all I want to say, and we support John's recommendation to you. And wish you best as you proceed to get to, get this job done. And then maybe have 10 years where you can sit back and see, see how it goes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Does the commission have any questions for the owner? Any comments, anyone from the? No questions, okay. Yes, ma'am.
Again, this is Patty Boswell, 602, Deer Hollow Drive. Just one thing to keep in mind as you're, if you accommodate that rezoning request, that there's houses on both sides of that road, and that road is a street, it's not a large road. And so I think when there was a petition, it may have been the last meeting, for land to be rezoned to commercial, it was said that you couldn't rezone it, like you had to make sure if you were backing up or fighting up against residential, that you had to go from commercial to else, else CC. So keep in mind, there's a lot of people on that road on the outside. And I know there's people here tonight that may be requesting that their houses are right on the same, the same area is what's being asked to be rezoned. So that would make sense, but then it doesn't make sense with people.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else, any other comments?
I'm sure.
Yeah.
It's not really common, more of a, the town attorney and I were discussing some other issues and something came up. And it was the overall rezoning process. I'm, I'm trying to figure out is that, say if it's a piecemeal on South Main Street, like to get like a couple properties on the Boswell side didn't apply for it, where the people cross the street. I know that later on, if something changes, the people cross the street and come and potentially request a zoning change if there was a mistake or a, I want to say, a change in use for the area.
Yeah, the area needs to change.
I'm trying to figure out what, how much would the area need to change to be, for them to come and do a change of use? Because that's why I was asking, asking the town attorney, like, just the rezoning, would that, would physical, I want to say, transformation of buildings have to go up?
There would have to be physical change in the neighborhood. Simply rezoning property, the courts have, are not, is not enough to justify a midstream, I'll call it, change in zoning based on a substantial change in the name. There's gotta be physical change. Since the last master.
I'm just trying to forget, because would it, that, I'm just trying to figure out, because since there's already commercial right across the street where the Donalds and stuff is, would that still, or would this, would that not allow it to be under the significant change? Or would it just be the Boswell property would be looked at? And because, I guess I want to say, how big is the area that we would have to look, look at for a significant change? Because I think that came to him up during the last discussion too.
I'm looking for the annexation from the other side, from the other side of that, of those houses. So if that gets annexed, then there could be something from the other side.
Yeah, but if it's not.
Are they in the town, or just as Frederick County, if they're in the town?
Yeah.
Who, the people or the?
People are.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, they're in town.
Yes.
It's Frederick County, but they're already in the.
Yeah.
I mean, in my view, the, you know, it's like, on the other side, this is the other side. It's commercial and on that side, it's presidential. And so if everything became commercial, then it would be a change. Because you see all those residences and then those residences back up to more residents.
Yeah. I'm just, I'm just trying to figure out if there's, if there's a remedy later down the road, if something, if they missed opportunity now, so if they can do it, request on a one-by-one basis later, if something changes to it, I just don't want to like. I just don't want to like close, close the door on anybody for another ten, ten years to, to correct something. So it's not like we could, or they could request something later that would help.
Yes.
Oh, yeah.
Can I always make a request?
Yeah, okay.
You know, one thing would be to consider in the workshop to bump that side of the road to neighbors professional maybe. And then, you know, that might fill some gap between now and the ten year if it has to be a little bit of commercial or something.
Yeah, alright, thank you. I just didn't want, I don't want to get that far, but thank you.
Any other comments?
Any comments?
Sorry. Seeing none, do I have a, a motion to grant a favorable recommendation to the council to rezonate eighteen oh one, South Main Street to CC?
I'll move, I'll move to that the planning commission grant a favorable recommendation to the town council to rezonate eighteen oh one, South Main Street to community commercial as part of the two thousand and twenty-three master plan.
Is there a second? Okay. It's been moved and seconded that we grant a favorable recommendation to the town council to rezonate eighteen oh one, South Main Street to CC as part of the two thousand and twenty-three master plan. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Please raise your hand so I can see. Those opposed? Okay, we will be granting a favorable recommendation to the town council.
Just for the record, I'm opposed just because I don't know what's going to happen with the other properties.
Right, I understand.
So to that, to that, I did make eighteen oh one a first copy. The first copy, we're looking at because they potentially.
In a certain sense, you have judgment whatsoever. It's my reason.
That's fine, that's fine. You don't really have to give reason with that. Thank you for that. The next one is seventeen oh one, South Main Street, a request to go from residential existing to community commercial. That is a, do you want to go give us a breakdown of this one, John, please? Are the owners here? Okay.
Give me a second so I can get the slide up so everybody can see.
Okay. I'm straight now. I know which way it is. I won't get it confused. Okay.
John, also clarify the area just above this slide.
Yeah, so this is the future area for our South Main route about that's currently at ninety, over ninety-five percent plans and hopefully will be moved toward the, going at the bids through our engineering department. Again, we're still working on some land transfers and some, you know, some other legal issues with some funny properties, but that currently is going to be a major roundabout intersection here. It'll be serving Rising Ridge Road, South Main, South Main Extended, and of course, South Main, North Main coming in from one forty-four.
John, how close is it going to be to that? Like a beat?
You're saying from this property line to the circle?
Yes.
I don't know that exactly. I can get you that hard information.
Barney, do you have any idea? Barney's hiding.
How, how does the track, the circle be to the Barney's property? The tree, the tree line?
Up close?
Yeah.
I, I, I don't have a.
Okay.
Close enough.
Fifty feet?
Close enough.
We can't, we can't guess, but it's, I mean, it's going to be right there.
I'm sorry? I don't think the, the tree line is not the given width. I don't think so.
Absolutely not.
The baby's not here.
So anyway, seventeen oh one, South Main is the next applicant. Again, this is hopefully one point two acres is what I have it labeled as. Again, the applicant also will notice that I had given to all adjoining property owners to the Boswell property that they were going through a rezoning request and then reached out to them to see if they were interested in rezoning their property because again, they'd be flooding this potential rezoned property.
Is there anything else we need to know about this property? Chairman, chair, chairperson, I mean, whatever, your town council person. Sorry, sorry, I was like, is there anything else?
Same about it.
To know that might impact this vote? That you put in your notes?
Yep.
No?
No, not, no, John. I, I mean, I, if it is, I can't say anything about it between. Conceptuality.
You did, you did put something in your notes. You did.
That's why I'm asking.
That's why we're asking.
We already have, they already have a closed meeting on it. At the end of last week, you know, the meeting is up and that's, that's, I can say on it. But that was published in the agenda too, in the agenda for the meeting.
Okay.
Yeah, no.
There are no answers.
Actually, part of the traffic circle from the plans that we've been giving from Barney will be taken, the upper corner of our property will be part of where the circle other side, right in there where the break is, to be taken part of our property right there. So when you look out the front door, you're going to see a circle.
Right, so there's like a partial takings perhaps?
Yes.
Yeah, so this is like a completely different issue than all these other projects.
Yeah, interesting.
That's separate of the rezoning workplace.
Is Barney here because?
Yeah, he's, he's hiding far.
So the server's going to be close for sure.
Yes. The upper corner of right in there, it's going to be right somewhere about in there is where they have it lined out.
Oh, okay. Barney, can you explain that? Because that road is, I mean, I, you said how far away it was. I was thinking it was like a hundred feet because it kind of pushes you that way. How's that circle encompassing that, is that whole corner going away with the circles? Like is that the easy way to put that circle?
So for clarification, that corner that for the Barney's property is for the leg of the circle, it's not for the circle itself. So there's four legs coming from South Main Street in three directions and Rising Ridge. The leg, it just, just like Rising Ridge Road is going to shift north because the, each leg is coming more square into the circle. There's some shifts of the roads to make it enter the circle properly. And so if you think, if the circle is more to the right, that leg from South Main Street from the south needs to shift to the right a little bit.
Gotcha.
It's for the leg of it, not necessarily the circle. I don't have the dimension of the circle to property line.
I got you. I understand what you're saying. Yeah, I thought that, I thought it was pushed more north, but that makes more sense.
I have a question. Do you know how, how much distance is between like your property seventeen oh one and the next one?
The next, the next neighborhood? Is that seventeen oh three? Is that seventeen oh three right next to them or is that seventeen oh two? Yeah, how much space?
Madam Chair. I'm not sure what you're asking.
How much land?
Hey, John.
Just a minute, let it finish, please, let it finish.
No, I'm not interrupting to say, but I think we should just stay focused on this because we're talking about stuff that will go out the bid. It's preferential, privileged information. And we should not be discussing design plans that could impact in what land's taken in an open meeting as this nature as we're delving into.
Well, I don't think we're getting, we're not, we're not trying to get specific. We just kind of want a idea so.
I know, I know, but it's not pertinent is the best way to describe it to the application at this time.
What's your opinion on that?
I know.
I know. Kind of legal issue, okay.
Well, we don't need to talk more about it.
No, yeah, we're actually, we're actually done with that. I was just asking how much land is between the two properties. They're not row houses. How much land is between, does anybody know?
We'll see, we'll see the house structure. You can see his house. And then the other houses there, the property's right against it, there's nothing between.
So not much?
No, yeah, it's, it's.
Yeah, it's right on the line too, I think.
You can, it'll wait.
And, and, and this one is one point something acres though, right?
One point two acres.
You know what seventeen oh three is?
We're actually speaking about seventeen oh one. We'll get to seventeen oh three. I'm not sure what.
Madam, are you just like living in a vacuum?
How many acres, how many acres is seventeen oh three?
Seriously?
Twenty-one thousand square feet.
Okay, so it's about a half an acre, it's about half an acre. Okay. So let's continue with seventeen oh one. The staff has recommended a rezoning to CC. Are there any other questions? Yes, sir?
Okay, I'm the council seventeen oh eight, South Main Street. And I observed your, your rezoning, your recommendation for eighteen oh one. And last month, Dr. O'Brien was denied a community commercial for his property because of residential properties that ordered it. And we have residential properties all over the place here. So I'm, and there, there was residential property across the street, a couple of them, and next door. So I'm wondering how can you, how can you rezonate this community commercial when Dr. O'Brien wasn't able to rezonate his property?
These people, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt. Some of these people have come in, are, and were going through the requests. They are requesting a rezoning.
Well, and you've just approved, you voted to recommend rezoning eighteen oh one, even though it borders against residential properties. I'm trying to understand what's the difference between that and Dr. O'Brien's property where you couldn't recommend rezoning because it had to have a buffer zone around it of, of, of neighborhood residential or neighborhood professional? So why, why doesn't this property have to have a buffer zone around it?
Well, be patient because that may be recommended.
Well, that wasn't the recommendation for eighteen oh one. And this is connected to it because, well, it's owned by the son of.
That has nothing to do with it.
What's that exactly? I pay my bills.
Please don't.
Excuse me.
Well, this is why my wife didn't come to, to say anything because of the leisure outburst or.
Oh, Jesus.
She had a heart attack back in June and she, she can't take this curse.
Sir, we're, we're, we're trying to do this as diligently as we can.
Yes.
And there is, there is some, there are some people here on that side of the street that have requested a rezoning. So the plant, our planner decided to take the Boswell property first. Now we're visiting all the other people that are requesting zones on that side.
But not everybody is, and it's.
Well, you have to be patient, see where we have to, we have to come up with a solution. So we're working through it this time.
But we've already got a recommendation to make to more commercial adjacent to residential property.
It also is in an area that is, is very, is changing and is going commercial. And that property, we feel.
Well, it's going commercial because of your decision to let it go commercial.
It's across from Chick-fil-A and a very commercial section town. Dr. O'Brien, that was very difficult because he's, he's a little bit more.
Well, it's across from.
Talk about what we shouldn't be revisiting.
Yeah.
We can, we should talk about this in a workshop, a future workshop. We have, this is what we're talking about.
Yeah, let's talk about this.
It seems unfair because Dr. O'Brien.
I know, but we're not, we're not talking about his right now. We're trying to get through this. Talk about, you want to talk about this and talk about this.
Well, yes, I'm saying that this, how, how, I'm wondering how can this be zoned community commercial when it's next to residential properties and the other shouldn't be.
Why didn't you come up there before we voted and made this statement?
Well, I didn't think you were going to vote in favor of it because of the, what happened with Dr. O'Brien's property. I thought you couldn't, and you couldn't recommend community commercial next to.
Okay, we are also, we are also just giving a favorable recommendation to town council. Those are the ones that make the final decision. But we have to, so that's where it's going now, to the town council.
You couldn't make a favorable recommendation for Dr. O'Brien because of the residential property. And now you can make.
Well, we're trying to get.
A favorable recommendation, even though this involves residential property too? I don't understand.
I'm, I'm sorry you don't understand, but we need to go on. We're working on seventeen oh one. The staff has recommended that we do this community commercial. Is there a motion to rezonate this property seventeen oh one, South Main Street from residential? Oh, I'm sorry, limited commercial, I'm sorry.
That's what I was saying.
Okay, I'm sorry. I just read it wrong. So the staff recommends that it be limited, you rezoned it to limited commercial.
That's incorrect. So as the staff recommendation is to rezonate the property to CC.
Well, why does it say this?
This person considered for rezoning LC, which is a step down. Okay, so yeah, so it was, yeah, so I was saying LC to create the buffer between the other residences. That was my intention.
Wait, could you, you want the LC as the.
That's what I was saying, LC. It still gives them a commercial element. It still allows for a step down between the CC to the residential. But it's still a recommendation that you have to give to the town council. If you choose to go CC because you don't like my recommendation of LC, so be it, or you go to NP. That's your priority. My, my suggestion is to go to LC. The owners are requesting CC.
Okay, so the owners requesting CC and you feel that it should be considered to be rezoned to LC instead of CC?
That's why this is a good step down. Unless, unless you choose to go, this could be all CC on the east side of South Main Extended and then everything on the left side either stay residential because the road could be the dividing thing between the zones as well.
Right, but we know there's at least two property owners.
There's, yeah, I don't want to.
That's correct.
Have, have they given us comments or anything?
Okay, can you turn your mic up just a second? Is yours on because I can't.
You got to get close to the two homeowners who don't want to rezonate. Have they said anything? Do you?
I've not been reached out to others yet. The one, at the end of the other meeting, they did come up and speak to me. And they were still, they just put a lot of money in their house and they didn't want to get it rezoned. I tried to explain to them that if they rezonate, doesn't, they don't have to sell their property immediately to a commercial developer. Just, you know, allows them the option to, you know, sell in the future, twenty years from now or thirty years from now. And either, you know, that residential use can continue with a special exception, I think, in the CC. Well, in LC, it could be, could be residential. But again, they were still opposed to us, still opposed at it at, at last month's meeting, I'm sorry. It's totally without abuse today, so.
Me too. I, I have a question, might be a legal question. I don't know if you have the answer, Tom. So if, if all these residences or the three that want to be, we can.
So if, if all these residences, or the three that want to be, um, become limited commercial, would that impact, so then Mr. Voslo, you know, they want to develop their property? And so would it impact, when we get into the site plan, et cetera, would it impact the buffer that's required if those properties are already commercial as opposed to still residential? Would there be less of a buffer required because they're backing up to limited commercial property instead of residential property?
Again, it's, it's all things illegal, you know, it, it would be legal. Again, I can't, but it's a good plan.
Right, so legally, there'd be, there could be less of a buffer.
Sure.
Okay, that's what I thought, so I just want, those of you who want your property rezoned to be aware of that. When, when people that, that don't really know, up here tell you that it's all going to be the same, that might not be accurate. So just because you can still live there, doesn't mean being limited commercial won't also impact the quality of life because of what we just discussed, like a less of a buffer.
But you can also impose a bigger buffer as a planning commission for that property.
Maybe, I don't know, I guess we could.
You can.
We've seen this commission in action.
Okay, so, go ahead.
So I think that, that corner to me screams community commercial. And I think the eighteen oh one decision was, was accurate with community commercial too. But I do like John's, you know, attempt to have a step down with limited commercial, but it, we're forming like a pocket there. And what would, what do we think about that? Because, because that corner really is a CC.
It's just hard because the, they, they plan to have a traffic circle right next to their house, so it kind of impacts.
Why don't you actually compare the CC ordinance with the limited commercial and see the difference? Because you can do a lot with LC. I mean, part of it's just size, so why don't you, you can pull them up and look at them. It's not like you're, if you're making an LC, it's not, it's not a huge burden compared to residential, so. Doesn't need to be CC, it can be LC and it's still. They can do that almost the same. Yeah, I mean, there's a size difference, and there's certain special exceptions like gas stations that you cannot have at LC. But I'm not going to be putting a gas station there. Right, it doesn't, yeah, you're not going to put that there.
Do you think LC would be a better fit?
It helps to make a transition, I think, yes. So is there, someone would like to make a motion? Go ahead.
I'll make a motion. I move that, uh, we recommend limited commercial for eighteen oh one, South Main.
Be seventeen oh. This is seventeen oh one. The corner lot, seventeen oh one.
Okay, so I'm sorry, eighteen, seventeen oh one. In part because we have, uh, we've made a recommendation, a motion that I recommend for eighteen oh one as community commercial. So my recommendation for seventeen oh one is limited commercial, this is a step down.
Is there a second?
A second.
All those in favor of recommending to the town council to rezone seventeen oh one, South Main Street from residential to limited commercial, please signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed? Okay, we're giving them a favorable recommendation to rezone to limited commercial. The next one up is seventeen oh three, South Main Street? Are we doing the same thing, John?
Yeah, that's the same thing, basically, uh, this is a, we move to the next page. Seventeen oh three, South Main, uh, twenty-one thousand square feet, plus or minus. Again, the applicant, uh, was requesting CC community commercial. Uh, the recommendation from the staff is to, if the eighteen oh one was recommended for CC zoning, that this parcel be considered to be rezoned, that LC limited commercial, creating a step down from the rezoning of eighteen oh one.
Is the owner here?
Yes.
Okay, do you have anything to say?
Um, just that, with the Voslo property being proposed as current line.
I'm sorry, yeah, you don't, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
And just state your name and where you live, I'm sorry.
No problem. My name is Lisa Voslo, and I live at seventeen oh three, South Main. And I, my property butts right up against the Voslo property, and to answer your question, madam, it also butts right up against seventeen oh one and seventeen oh five. We are, everybody on that street has share property lines, we share grass, blades of grass.
Thank you.
So I'm going to answer my question.
Yeah.
You're welcome. Um, so knowing that the, the request was made previously by the Voslos and that it was potentially going to be rezoned, and we've now made that favorable request, and then also made the favorable request for my neighbors next door, it only makes sense that I have that option as well. I don't necessarily, or I just want to have the option, um, to not be the only house there with a commercial property around. That was my thinking.
Okay. So my only question is, since the property next door, um, does not want to be rezoned, how are you going to zone a limited commercial next to residential?
Wait, is it a, they don't want to, or they just have a good request? And I thought that we didn't know the stands of seventeen oh five.
Yeah, they haven't gotten a response back.
All right, well, it's the other one, so, you know, you're going down line, at least we know with the. Right. But, but also, we don't rezon properties when people haven't applied. Right, so theirs is going to stay RE. Seventeen oh five is going to stay RE.
No, we, we wouldn't have a pocket, we wouldn't, we wouldn't change all that row and then leave a pocket. Like, that's, that's, just because they have a request, it doesn't mean that we favorably do that.
Well, I think that we discussed that that's true, and also, there's another, um, here's the one who definitely doesn't want to be seven oh. Seven, seventeen oh seven clearly said, we do not want to be rezoned. So we're not rezoning a property that does not want to be rezoned. So you're going to have a pocket anyway. And seventeen oh nine has requested a rezoning. This is a dilemma that we've had ever since this all came up, and it has not been able to be resolved.
I do have a question, maybe some clarification here too. Looking at the packet of, for the rezoning request of eighteen oh one, there's, uh, yes, a land survey, which is not included in the other packets, uh, not, it was done by Van, Vanmark. It shows, I'm not sure how up to date the information is, but the, shows the property next to the current one up is owned by a bank, so I'm not sure if a bank would request.
No, that's already been.
Taken, taken care of?
Yeah, that's already under, this is from two thousand nineteen.
Okay, never mind.
All right.
The other one is owned by Eliana, which might be a rental, which doesn't, so he might not took care of that, so he rents it no matter what, so there. All right.
So then should we do this one as NP for the buffer gain for the residences, general one? Do you rezon, is there like an authority?
Well, you can't really do NP, I mean, then you're going to have limited commercial, NP, residential, and then neighborhood professional again?
Remember, it butts up to commercial, I mean, I mean, it's butting up in, in the east side, it's commercial.
Seventeen oh five?
Yeah. The Voslo property.
All these parcels.
All these parcels do.
Yeah, I know, that's why I was making my point about not having a pocket of RE.
But we, like, we can't just arbitrarily rezon them.
Comment, um, Joe Consol, seventeen oh eight, South Main Street, um, it's not commercial yet. You're just proposing to give a favorable recommendation. And also on the other side, across the street, it butts against residential.
Well, we're not talking about, we don't need to talk about the other side because it's not, it doesn't, it's not affected by the Voslo property.
But the other side is, uh, the other side is on the same area of the street, it's affected.
Well, it's always been, it's always been a contradictory, and, you know, we didn't decide a safe solution, so. But by the time this gets to the town council, maybe we'll have some better ideas. It's not till the, everyone that, well, you might not all know, when people say recommendations, what they mean is everything we're doing through the master plan, ultimately, the town council has to approve the master plan. So nothing is definitive, it's just recommendations. And it's not going to go there next week, it's going to go there once we're done with the entire master plan, and then we pass it on to the town council. You can go, tell them what you want and don't want. Yes. Yes, sir.
The equity eighteen oh eight, South Main Street, um, I don't know if it's opening a can of worms with what I'm going to say with this, but, um, it's all a can of worms, yeah. The two houses that haven't been asked to rezone there, um, you guys just said, well, we can't rezon them because they haven't asked to rezone, but I've talked to several other people around town, and it sounds like, from what they've said, that you guys have rezoned properties without people. You know, there's a history of a couple different.
Well, not when someone's specifically saying, do not rezon me, that's, that's different.
Yeah, okay, so if they just are absent and say, they, they don't say anything, then it's kind of like, then it's been known to happen, and, uh, like, the rezoning can happen.
Yeah, you, you gotta be careful about making general, general, generalizations because you don't know the specific situations, and you do that, and then somebody doesn't get a, anyway. If they're limited commercial, and then they don't get a buffer, then they didn't ask to be, you, you just don't know.
That's a tricky situation because the vast side of those properties do touch, like physically touch, commercial, and it goes.
And if they're residential, then they get more protection than if they're also commercial. I mean, I mean, they shouldn't be happening, as your father said, but it is, so now we have to figure out some, you know.
Because one person's absent, right, that's, that didn't say anything on that side of the street, which was owned by someone that owned a lot of properties and.
One person who lives at seventeen oh nine.
To rent a property.
I guess it does not make a big resound.
And then, you know, the person said they don't want to be, right?
Which, it was seventeen oh five or seventeen oh seven?
So seventeen oh five, that just got, their house just got redone.
Okay.
Spoke to me at the last meeting and said that they're not in favor of rezoning their property.
Okay.
Seventeen oh seven, um, I have yet to have any communication for that.
So I've talked with seventeen oh five, and he's here in this room, I'm not going to call him out, but.
Oh, he's, somebody's here who didn't apply?
No, somebody's here that, um, is against it, so I'm just saying, like, they are here, if they, if they feel like talking, I'm not going to say who it is, but seventeen oh five is here.
Well, it'd be really nice if they would talk, so at least we could.
If they want to, I'm not going to pressure anybody, but I'm just saying if we try to help.
They wanted to work, they didn't want to talk last night, so I suspect they still.
Can they send us a note? Okay, to you.
And it's me and him.
I'm just trying to help.
No, that's okay, they don't want to speak, we're not going to, we're not going to, it's okay.
So then, my other quick question is.
He raised his hand, is that him?
Yeah, that would be me.
Okay, would you like to speak?
Sure, yeah, yeah. Yeah, I don't want to be, I'm listening, I'm trying to learn what's going on here. We moved in, my such a friend from seventeen oh five, and my wife Karen, that couldn't be here today, she's working. But, um, uh, we bought this property as a retirement home about eighteen months ago, like, two years. And, um, we're unaware at the time of the development plans required, it wasn't any mentioned in the, in the purchase that all this stuff was going on around us, so we were a little bit surprised when, when we learned about it. And more surprised when the signs began to go up on the, on the street. So, um, we haven't decided, my wife and I haven't decided how we feel about what we want to be zoned. We, um, like that our neighbors, um, were sensitive to the many different positions that we can have, especially at the end of the block, if they've got a little kid, they've got, you know, a traffic circle going in, and that's kind of a mess. But, um, you know, we're also looking out for our own interest. The equity that we had in our previous property is done with this place, and, um, we don't, we're learning, um, and helpful, thank you. We're learning what the different stages are, but we haven't, uh, quite decided yet because we can't afford to just trash ourselves, um, to the goddess of wawa, whatever goes behind this. So, um, that's, that's why, that's why we are.
Thank you.
Yep.
Yes, sir.
I, I, you know, somebody always wants to help, and I know it might be better to just be quiet, but.
Sir, you have to, yeah, that's fine, we need that for the record, sorry.
In this, in this situation, this is a master plan update, right? All citizens have the right to advance what they think maybe they'd like to see their property zoned. That's their opportunity, that's the way Mount Erie wants it because you don't want it on a basis of change and mistake. So some people don't want their property changed, others may. John's done staff work, and you have, let's say, in this case, more people on the street who want to have their property changed, and you have a couple, maybe one or two, that don't. You hear from them, you read their letters, you hear them here tonight, then after that, it's your decision. So John could lay a map at, with it, and then say, here's his recommendation, and you see it. He can't give everybody what they want. And then the commission has to get one to decide what, if they like the zoning districts, if they feel they have all the tools, back to that. But you're not constrained just because one person, this is not an individual rezoning here. You're making the decision what the zoning is going to be. That's all I'm trying to say, it's your call. It's your call, and you're doing the right thing, you're hearing from everybody. And that's why there's a planning commission, somebody has to decide, and just as you say, once you make your decision, it goes up to the council. And they may make changes up there, or they may take it, just the way you recommend it. Thanks.
Thank you, thank you. So, right. I'd like to go to nine and then come back to this one.
I have another question.
Yes.
Well, we were, my wife was, was wanting to come here, but because of the litrants of some of the people shoving out in the audience, she was afraid, and she's. she was afraid and she's worried also about, um, living down the street. And I wonder if you could give me advice about, um, possible, how would, how would we get a rezoning order to?
That's, sir, sir, that's something that you have to talk to our police, to the Mount Airy Police Department about. But I would hope that once the decision is made, whether it may be made in their favor or not, that they would be good citizens, and I do trust that that does happen here in the town of Mount Airy. It's, it's been tested here for a little, for a couple of weeks, but I still believe that the people here are genuine and I don't think you're gonna have to worry, but if you need to do that, you'd have to go to the police department to do that.
Okay.
Okay?
Okay, because, well, at least on their, their elders here.
Okay.
She was worried, right?
She's, she's fine. We're gonna move on to seventeen oh nine real quick.
Seventeen oh nine?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes, your good comment.
I would agree. I would just, Nicole Mann, four oh five One Union Road Drive. I, from talking to a lot of other residents, um, a lot of residents kinda thought that everything about this was kind of like off the table, like that we were dealing with all these other things, and so a lot of residents didn't even know we were discussing this tonight, and I'm lying a lot. I would, at least, my, my recommendation is I feel like listening to both sides of things. I definitely understand the property that's on the edge of the circle, I think that was a good idea to make it limited commercial. However, personally, I would be more careful with going down the line and making the rest limited commercial. Because it's almost like you're bullying, not me particularly, but you're pushing the homeowners to, okay, well, they did, and they did, and direct allow them to, and then before you know it, the whole street is commercial. And then you have the poor homeowner that really just wants to stay in their home and their quality of life is gone. Or the homeowner that wanted to retire here, they love Mount Airy, and now they're looking at a wawa behind their house. Not that that's happening, just saying like that's, that's a potential that could happen, and so I think treading lightly with the rest of these properties would be a good, um, plan, just maybe revisiting it later, once the Boslow property is either officialized or not via the council, because I think if that's even turned down, then the rest of them.
Again, this is just a recommendation to the town council, it's that part of the decision, we're just trying to get through these properties, so that's what we're here to talk about tonight, is to see what the recommendation the planning commission wants to give to the town council.
Yeah, I know, that's the final vote. I just would say, like, definitely don't, I wouldn't give community commercials in any of these properties, just because, I mean, tread lightly, just kind of my, try to have a little bit of, I feel, of both sides. And that's all.
Okay, yes.
So, we saw less than seventeen oh three South Main, and I appreciate you feeling both sides. I'm now, by their recommendation, surrounded on two sides by some version of commercial. So I would like them to not tread lightly on, and recommend it to be commercial. Um, I don't know if it's appropriate or not, so I apologize upfront for bringing this forward. Um, and maybe you can help, Mr. McCarran, it's a legal thing. Are property owners allowed, if you rent a property as a rental, like if I rented my property, which I don't, but if I was renting, am I allowed to sublet that to another renter?
So you're a tenant, you wanna sublet it? The answer is, uh, from the town's perspective, there probably wouldn't be any, anything that would prevent you, however.
Just at the lease.
Check the lease, because your landlord's not gonna want, at least not without their consent to some, typically that.
Okay, and that question, I know it sounds off the wall, like question pain, because there is a property on the street here that you're talking about that is potentially doing it. So I don't know if that even plays a role in this, I'm not trying to muddy the waters, um, but it is one that doesn't want to be rezoned, so I don't know how that, again, I'm not trying to dirty or muddy anything or make it more difficult for you, but. Been muddied for a while. Yes. You're not feeling put upon or forced or anything. No, I don't, no, I'd rather have the option to stay as a resident. But if, if those other, let's say, a gas station goes in, or anything goes in behind my property, butts up against my property, and then that forces my neighbors to do something different, and, and this was news to me tonight at the circle. I mean, I knew the circle was coming, but I didn't know it was imposing on their property, that was news to me. You know, if I lived there, I may, and they have young children, I may decide to do something different if I were them. Um, so if, as that starts changing and neighborhoods change and people change, um, I at least wanna have that option. Yeah, this is sort of a unique.
This is a section of town.
It, it is, and it is away from, it is away, it's kind of off the path, which is why I like it. I love my house, I've been there about three and a half years, um, I love the area, I love my house, I don't want to move. I'm not looking to sell tomorrow, or if the recommendation were made and this could happen tomorrow, I'm not looking to go anywhere. I just wanna have that option available to me.
Okay. So if we look at seventeen oh nine, are the owners of seventeen oh nine here? Okay. So if we look at seventeen oh nine, it's on three sides, um, back to Boslow. So it's kind of like seventeen oh one, um, on the other side. Even more so, so John, your recommendation on this one is also LC?
Yeah, that was my recommendation to Craig to step up.
Okay.
And that's, you could still choose to make it CC, that's what you say is that. Whatever your recommendation is, this is just my professional opinion, it seems like that would be the correct step.
Um, are the owners here, do you wanna speak, or, or, to anything?
No, I'm Thomas Fleming.
Sure.
One thousand eight Middale Avenue, this is my, um, mother's house, and I also own either property. Uh, my recommendation still is staying in CC.
Okay.
Madam Chair, may I?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Um, I think at one of these meetings, it might have been mentioned by somebody that, I wanna say that someone might be interested in purchasing seventeen oh nine for the rest of the property to eliminate the, I wanna say, that one, yeah, whatever, the dog leg or whatever you wanna call it, out into it. Say if it was limited, if you rezoned it to LC, what, how would we be able to put that into the CC, that little output into the property? Can, could it be at the time of sale subdivided off of it? And just, you know, just have a purchaser buy that little chunk? Or, 'cause then you're kinda like doing the opposite, you're creating a chunk of LC into the CC. And it hinders development of the property that way.
So you're thinking that should be CC?
Yeah, but you can't do it, no, I'm not saying the whole, sorry.
Some parcels can be divided, like.
That's one.
It could be CC, this portion of that property could be zoned CC.
But would it have to be done now, or would it, could it be done at sale of property and subdivided?
It could be done then, and, and it'd just be a mapping, it would just be mapping and divided that way. But the town council would have to make that decision.
Well, we could subdivide, not subdivide, but just zon that little chunk CC.
You're recommending that the rear portion be zoned CC and the front portion be LC, if that's, if that's what the planning commission wants to do.
Uh, thank you, I just didn't wanna cause trouble down the later for somebody.
Again, the applicant, as you just said, is requesting CC.
Yeah. Thank you.
And maybe his intentions are to sell to, to develop or.
Yeah, I'm not saying it's just that, it's just one of those weird, it can create a headache later down the.
Again, this could be all CC.
Yeah.
Right, this whole parcel could be CC with the adjoining property being LC. Except that's one of the people who didn't request rezon.
That could also be the, the response from, from council.
Yeah.
Do a recommendation that we give.
Yeah, I just wanna make sure we could do that too, so, okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Hey there, um, I'm David Salali, eighteen oh two, South Main Street, so I'm kinda across the street from that. And I apologize, I think I missed the proper, uh, timing on this comment, but this kinda goes into it with what you were saying about, uh, cutting up that parcel like that, so it's LC and then CC on the other side. I didn't come up for eighteen oh one, 'cause I kinda thought we were gonna handle this more altogether instead of every single one individually, but for eighteen oh one, I was wondering, I don't know, maybe this is something I have to bring up at the town council meeting, but if you can slice like the part of eighteen oh one that faces the street right up against all the residential, um, if that's something that's possible as well, 'cause I guess I should've come up, but I thought we were kinda tackling it all together because they play into each other so much, but I'm wondering if that's a possibility or not.
Wait, can you explain what you're describing?
He's saying to, he's saying to create this whole parcel here as LC.
Correct, yeah.
That's what he's saying, and create a CC division here.
'Cause it seems like we're trending towards making this whole row on the right side of the street LC at this point, so it would kinda make sense to keep it consistent, and I live across the street, I'd be one of the only houses across from CC rather than LC.
But we can't split that, we can't, we, we can't draw a line across the Boslow property and, and continue that, that, that back, that east side property line, like, that's, that would cut off that dog leg, like, we can't do that, we, that's somebody's property. But we can't just say, hey, we're gonna draw a line and split the property.
It sounds like that's what you were saying for seventeen oh nine.
No, that, if they did, if they wanted to.
If they wanted to do it, it was just.
They could consent.
So you would need the consent of the Boslos, not?
Right, it's their property. Yeah, we could draw a line through the middle of their property.
Okay.
I like that, I mean, that's an interesting concept.
Good thinking outside the box.
I just think that's what, like, seems consistent in my mind if we're gonna be having LC facing RE on the other side, except for my house, which has CC on the other side, it's a little unfortunate, but.
Is that something that when it gets to town council, you guys can talk about?
You need to speak in your microphone closer to your mic, 'cause I can hear, I can't hear you. I think I heard you.
My question was, is that something when this gets to town council, with the permission of the Boslos, is that something you guys could discuss as an option?
I, I mean, anything, anything's possible, we're, we're gonna any, probably any discussion of it, so, I mean, but I mean, we would have to wait till it comes before us and recommendation or just a more of a mental note from somebody saying, hey, this was discussed, that option was discussed, what do you think, and go, and we would have to talk with the Bos, Boslos or somebody, the current owners of the property, see if that's something they wanna do also. But I didn't like, I mean, it's, I never thought of it.
As a resident, you can talk to the Boslos and see what they're saying about that, you could, or you surely can, uh, mention that if they, and ask them if that's something they would do, wanna do, but it's all on that, like, I said, it's their decision to, to want to do that. So, you know, you could talk to them.
Ten years ago, um, when we were doing the last plan, towards the end of the last plan, the, we had a meeting with the council, DC had a meeting with the council, and there were certain properties that some of the planning commission wanted to be limited commercial, and town council said no. They were professional for these, so it was more like it was an actual, I guess, workshop type thing. So I don't think any assumptions should be made about the, you know, any of it.
Right.
At this point, so, yes, you should make sure that you stay aware of everything that's happening. Um, because the reason that we're having, like, I'm, I'm looking against all this commercial because I don't think whole property should be commercial for the very reasons that we're having problems making a decision. You know, it should've been partially commercial and everything that orders residential should be something else. And that could be possible, depending on what they wanna do with the property. Knowing that they will not necessarily get what they want to do with the property because they have to go through all kinds of additional.
Okay, thank you. So we're on seventeen oh nine, the same recommendation.
I just can't stay seated.
Lead to eighteen oh nine, and I just wanted to, like, say, like, same thing that he just said, actually. It's kind of interesting he said that because I thought of that last week, because I live right across the street from that old farmhouse and the barn and everything. I don't know if Kurt would be open to it, but, you know, that would be nice idea to take, I was thinking the other direction, cutting off, you know, from where that property sticks out, going east, I guess, um, and changing it to different, you know, zones, so it's commercial up there and limited commercial or neighborhood, you know, professional or something down there where the house and the barns are, because, you know, that would basically, do, doing commercial right now, I know it could change once you go into planning and all that stuff, and you have to approve something, but you have all that access right there on the South Main Street to that property right now. Because otherwise, you'd have to go on to seventy, which isn't gonna happen, or twenty seven, and that's not gonna happen. Or they have to buy, um, you know, the property that's up there by the circle to connect up to the circle. So for that property commercial, it's gotta have access for that gas station, and where's that access gonna go? It could go on to South Main, I guess, right across from Chipotle, or, uh, not Chipotle.
You're putting another Chipotle?
Yeah, I'm putting it down, just in case you didn't catch that, no. So, you know, putting commercial is one thing, and planning is a whole nother thing, but, um, one thing that came across my mind too is if they do have access to that circle up there um, for the commercial for the gas station, is if whoever owns that next, if they're able to pay for that circle up there, or part of that circle to be put in, that might be an interesting, you know, way to help the town out with money and stuff, is, is say, hey, you're gonna put all this traffic through, you know, can you guys help pay for this circle, if that's how their access is gonna be through there?
I think they already thought of that.
Yeah, really, so, by the way, you keep saying gas station, and gas stations are a special exception.
Oh, okay.
In, in commercial, so you don't get a ga- gas station unless you.
That's just what the rumor was around.
Yeah, so, see, that's just, just so you're all aware, huh?
That's why you, that, I'm sorry.
Don't get a gas station, just 'cause you want one.
Right, and that's why.
Or hotel or whatever.
Exactly, that's why you, you come here and not go on Facebook and find out what everybody's saying.
I just talk to my neighbors next door, and I, I've heard it through the grapevine.
So, it, and, and that's fine, I mean, everybody starts to think, you know, I understand that, but the buck stops here.
Okay.
And at town council.
Yeah.
I would like to thank the two commission members, the two commission members for bringing that up, 'cause I was gonna say that too also.
Nothing's been decided, community commercial, particularly for a gas station, if you read, if you read the zoning, for it is special exception. And if, the rumor mill is out there for every, everything, no matter what, all the developments. So if you're concerned with what you're hearing, could come up, as, as the chairperson said, come to the meetings, we're actually looking at town code online and see what is allowed under it. So that can kill some of the rumors out there also. Or call our town planner, John, John Brady, thank you. Oh, you're awa- you're welcome.
I turned myself off, I turned the light off. So let's kind of, let's try to finish seventeen oh nine, so John is, the, um, staff is recommending that we rezon to limited commercial. Is there a motion for that?
Well, can we, sorry, can we just say it limited commercial, but talk about the, do we have to say something now?
No, no, no. Are you okay? Take a drink, you're okay? It's all right, it's all right, take it. No, she's okay, she's breathing.
We'll, we'll wait for you, Martina, okay, the suspension's just gonna bill, that's all, but we'll wait for you.
Even louder now.
So I'll, I'll make the motion. The seventeen oh nine, we reconsidered throwing it for limited commercial.
Is there a second? It's been moved and seconded that we, uh, give a favorable recommendation to rezone seventeen oh nine, South Main Street, to limit, to the town council from um, residential to limited commercial, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Alright, so now we have to move back to seventeen oh three.
Do you want to do, do you want to do the staff report again, or?
No, I, I, I think we got it. We've got that. I'm just gonna throw it out there that we, I'll move that we give a favorable recommendation to, um, seventeen oh three, South Main Street from residential to limited commercial, we give a favorable recommendation to the town council. Is there a second? It's been moved and seconded that we give a favorable recommendation to seventeen oh three for, um, a change of zoning from residential to limited commercial, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed?
Was that Scott's second?
Okay, now, don't, remember, these are just favorable recommendations, and nothing happens until the entire master plan is.
So moving on to the next item, uh, which is the twenty three, twenty twenty three master plan draft plan schedule. I don't have a draft plan set up yet, um, I apologize, I thought it was more for discussion on what you were wanting to see, and actually, after hearing the next, uh, meeting, I always feel like we should have a joint workshop for all these residential requests possibly, um, to walk through that and maybe step one. Again, I'm still working on the draft, um, so hopefully ha, having that, I think by the, uh, the June, I think it was the June, planning commission meeting to have some kind of a draft, if at all possible, is my, is my target goal.
Okay, and I'd like us to kind of think, too, about what, how, uh, to look at the twenty thirteen, um, master plan and see if you can kind of come up with some sort of a, a draft schedule, you know, as well. It's hard if you've never done one, but how, how we want to go about looking at the draft. I'm not opposed to a joint workshop, John, but however, the, the council is kind of right in the midst now of budgets, so I don't, I don't want to put any stress on them until after the budget's passed, which would be when? July?
Hopefully, May, June? May?
May.
If everything works out right at the budget workshop on Thursday, it'll be what I've talked about at May. Uh, so, I mean, without checking with my fellow council members, I mean, I can bring it up at the council meeting in May to say, hey, let's start at the count, look at the calendars, the planning commission would like a joint workshop, just to get rid of all the recommended zoning changes for the master plan, and come up with a date, and relay the date back to you, but I would figure June, July-ish, maybe.
Okay. We have a workshop, joint workshop on the second, correct, of June?
That's correct, and that's, again, later in the, on the agenda, um, I guess the two, two being determined, I think, currently, I think we're gonna be able to hold it at the auxiliary building, I didn't want to move ahead on that yet.
Okay.
That's for the, uh, actually for the back property work session, on June the second. So again, um, if it's June the second. That took place in our, our last control workshop. Again, it's gonna be on the, the auxiliary building.
I have a couple questions. So if we decide.
Who's your question to?
You and Tom.
Okay.
Sorry.
Does it look like you're talking to Tom?
If we decide, if we decide to go through with the, our, um, architectural engineer, hiring them, does it, ha, it has to go through an R, RFP, correct? We have to do an RFP for it?
Uh, we do have consultants on staff, uh, AMT and Design Collective are within the five-year window, so we could possibly pray out to them and not have to go to RFP.
I collected, okay, where's the other one?
Uh, AMT is the name of our engineer slash, our, our common engineer, sorry.
Okay.
I'm sure we can get a writer or whatever.
Right, that helps a lot, thank you.
And I don't know if we need to have that secured before the June, but I think we already have, we would have something in play. We're bringing it up next month for discussion. May, I don't think we're gonna have one by the second, yeah, but, not sure.
Well, the recommendation was to consider it, right?
Right. Well, it's only, it'll be on the.
It's on the agenda, and we'll know in May. Um, and then if we did continue with that, they would have enough time to do, at least, look at what we're doing for the workshop.
What, what's the timing on that five-year timeframe for both of those?
I think, well, the AMT is probably on their first year, year and a half, uh, Designs Collective, I'm not sure, they might be on their fourth year, possibly. That's generally.
Four pill, then that was two. It's probably a four-year form. I think there would be great, uh, great advantage and benefit in the combination of planning commission and council. Speaks with, in more detail with Design Collective about the larger vision and context of what they were recommending to us.
And really, I'd have to get back with them to see how much time they would have to be able to review the plan. I would think no less than sixty days, thirty months, for a review of the plan.
Okay. Um.
Well, I mean, that's the most direct and quickest path, so.
Yes.
If it's that, that's pretty much as fast as we can do it, because.
Right, without the RFP. We're a couple months down the road.
So that, that is a, sleep.
So should we?
I mean, my, my thought pattern is that we don't have to have a consultant sitting in the room on June second. What we need is to get through these workshops, have a plan, see what, you know, comes next from the Katz brothers, and then have the consultant.
Okay.
As far as the logistics, you know, if we need to get the RFP, if we just need to put somebody on retainer, if we're gonna use somebody currently, or if we're gonna go out there and seek somebody else, those are all questions that can be answered relatively quickly after you decide that you want to use a consultant. And I'll be working on that, I mean, between now and then, to figure out how to get one hired as well.
Okay. Thank you. Just make sure it's on the thing. For instance, so, um, we have the reports and other business, and the council liaison report?
Uh, it's included in the packet, so for experience of time, I would say just nothing's changed from what was included in the packet.
Okay. Um, we have a master plan workshop on May the fifth at six o'clock. And then we have the joint workshop with the town council, a location to be determined.
Which I just gave out, we say, I'm pretty sure it's gonna be held at the activity building.
Okay, and that is June the second, it's not on here, June the second?
It is.
At the, um.
It hasn't been determined yet.
Okay.
After the agenda went out, those, uh, finalizations have been ratified, so.
And then our next planning commission meeting is May the twenty third.
Correct, uh, it was one month, or one week earlier because of.
One more week, okay. Does anyone else have any other business? Do I hear a motion to adjourn? No motion? Is there a second? Uh, it's been moved and seconded that we adjourn, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, all those opposed? Okay, we need adjourn, thank you all for coming.